Yes.
The first order of business, we should organize the board.
I nominate David Bemis.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, adjustments to the agenda. None?
No.
All right, minutes from the prior meeting, I will make the motion to accept the minutes from the prior meeting.
I'll second that motion.
I think this is where Kamala wanted to comment.
Okay.
Exactly, yes, I did, I did. This is, I'm here on behalf of the Pinnacle Association and I wasn't at the other meeting. But I have, I downloaded the minutes and they're, they're all accurate with with a little bit of an implied, I'm concerned that it's possible that anyone reading the minutes here may not understand the fact that allowing ATVs on the property is, basically ATV use is not allowed on Pinnacle property by the conservation easements that we hold. So in the very rare cases where that has been allowed, very rare, it's, it's an exception to those easements and it's, the decision is primarily in the hands of the Vermont Land Trust and VACB that co-hold those easements. So I didn't want anyone to misunderstand what Andy was describing that in those rare exceptions where ATVs, there's an historic trail. He's not saying anything untrue, it is real, that those exceptions depended on on trails being used responsibly and a group that would take that responsibility on. But I, I also don't want to mislead anyone because it is such a rare exception.
Okay, but it's not, it's not something that would be, that the Pinnacle is saying the historic uses of it, it is absolutely saying it won't allow, it's just that it is very rare and it is through the conservation.
Right, it's basically not allowed by the conservation easements, that's the bottom line. So if it is, if it ever, ever happens, it's an exception. And we do have some instances historically where there has been an exception. Just because of the way, the minutes kind of simplified the matter, I wanted to show up and make sure that, you know, we weren't expecting something that isn't really the whole story.
Okay.
Just to clarify.
Yes.
Good, okay.
Didn't think it was, it was being promised, that, that was not my, my, the way I gathered it, but it that that would be a consideration at least that.
Okay.
Is my.
It might be, if possible to put in the minutes something about it being an a rare exception to our conservation easements, that might help anyone who might possibly read these minutes and come back to us and say, but look, the minute said you'd allow it, you know.
I would, I would modify my motion to add that, that it would be a rare exception to allow ATVs, the historical use of that property.
And I'll second.
Beautiful.
I'll second that motion to the correction of those minutes.
Thank you so much.
Approve the minutes.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Could you repeat that motion, I didn't quite get it all.
It was to approve the minutes with the addition that ATV use on the conservation land is a rare, a rare.
Exception.
Exception.
And Denise seconded that.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
No, and we voted and approved that change, that addition to the minutes.
Okay, so does that mean that the support letter will be able to be signed and sent to us?
Yes.
Oh, that's wonderful, we're preparing those grants now and that's, that's super, I'm really glad that we were able to share, share the project and talk it over.
Okay, all right.
And do you have a copy of that to sign and send, or is it just our time?
We can, we will be the ones to sign it. All right. In with that, I will make the motion to approve the motion from the prior, from the February Regula Select Board meeting to support the conservation of the property off the Brookline Road, the Massey property. Is there a second to that, to approve the motion that was made at the last meeting? Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Public comment. If we keep it down to three minutes if we can, and I can't see everybody, so if you can just state your name before you make the comment. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment, anybody? Can you see anybody that's looking to make a comment?
I do not see anybody unmuting or raising their hand, Sherry, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I did just unmute. I have a question for the board and I guess what I would like to know is, first I want to congratulate Janet on her win for the select board and having worked with Janet on the steering committee. I know she's, I mean, I'm sorry, not steering committee, that's another committee, I'm on the meeting house committee. You know, she's definitely brought a number of great ideas to our committee which have been very helpful. The concern that I have however is that we have a conflict of interest policy, I believe, in the town, I don't have it in front of me right now. And we have a situation now where we're going to have a board perhaps going into executive sessions with an employee. And I want to hear from the board members how we can be confident that there aren't any issues related to conflict of interest that may be happening behind closed doors.
Well, we do have the policy, the conflict policy and we will follow that policy.
Can I hear from Janet and Denise as well about that because you know, it seems that anytime that a personnel issue, and I don't want to say issue, I don't know what they are, but anytime personnel is used, it goes behind a closed door right now. And now we're talking about a mother and a son. And I have some concerns about that and I, I don't know what happens in those, we never hear about any discussions that come out of those conversations that happen behind closed doors, so how do we feel confident going forward?
Well, I'm glad you brought that, that up, Sherry. We will second personnel policy and if it is a matter of a board member on something having to do with their child, the person would probably, most likely recuse themselves from that vote.
And what about discussions that are happening behind closed doors that are not about votes?
The person would recuse themselves, per se, would recuse themselves.
So if they were going to, if there's a personnel issue going into a closed door meeting and a person is going to be recusing themselves because of that related to conflict of interest, would they maybe not go into that executive session because of that?
It would be, it would be determined with each, with each executive session.
In the executive session?
Probably be determined before that, or it might be during the executive session. If, if the matter is such, then the person would leave the executive session.
I, I know it passed when it was a conflict of interest with a board member. The board member did speak in the executive session, but there was no vote in the executive session or when we came out. And they're allowed to give their input, but they can't make decisions on that matter.
Yes, this is not a new, it's not a new thing for the board to have discussions like this.
It's not a new thing to have discussions like what?
Well, personnel matters with a member of the board being, having an interest in the personnel matter.
Okay, okay, just, I, I just, you know, felt it important to acknowledge and raise it. And I think for my own sake and as well as others in the town to just have an understanding that we can be confident that that policy will be abided by.
All right.
Thank you.
Helps for public comment.
I, I have a follow-up question to that. And I appreciate Sherry for that thoughtful, critical thinking there. And I, what does recuse mean, like I understand recuse is like you remove yourself from the situation kind of, but like, does that mean that then they don't partake in the conversation at all, including, you know, body language, like leaving the room? Or is that they stay in the room, they just don't say anything or don't vote on it?
Well, they certainly would not vote on it, usually they would not participate in it. Participate in the situation and it can go to the, to the act of, of leaving the room.
Is there an official policy that guides what, what that, you know, behavior it is, whether it is leaving the room or staying the room? Because even, you know, even if a person stays, like if a person stays in the room, even if they recuse themselves, then they have the ability to know what went on there, be able to like talk about it to the person, you know. So there's just like some, it, it still sort of feels conflicting today to me, so I just was wondering if there was any type of like guidance either through VLCT or some town guidelines that dictate what recusing means.
Okay, we have a model VLCT policy on, on recusal.
Do you mind, do you mind just, just saying what that, what that guide is, so we all know?
Well, I don't have it in front of me, but you could stop down when the office is open and certainly can see any of the policies that we have here.
And that would be through Darlene, I would imagine then?
It would be, yes.
All right, thank you.
All right, anybody else for public comment? All right, here and none, we will go on to boards and officials. Sherry, do you have anything for the meeting house?
Oh boy, I do. I don't know if anybody saw the press release that came out, I, I heard, I didn't see it, but I heard that it was perhaps in Vermont Digger today, I'm not sure where else. We have been awarded a $50,000 grant from the Paul Bruin Memorial Grant Program with the Preservation Trust of Vermont. And so that in combination with a gift that was given to the Historic Society last year along with funds that were already available is going to enable us to tackle the exterior work that we had been hoping to be, to do this summer. I'm hoping that we'll be able to schedule contractors for it this summer, it's a little bit late at this point to try and do that. I want to acknowledge and thank Candace Damon for her grant writing which got us through the door on this one. And I think that it may be, yeah?
I was just going to say, now the grant was to the meeting house committee and the town, or was it to the Historical Society?
Right, no, the, the grant is, is to the committee and the town. That was a $50,000 grant that was just announced, we had been informed about it a couple of weeks ago, but they were asking it to not be made public until they put the public announcement out, which they just did this week, I believe. So yes, that is made to the town.
Is that a matching grant, or is that, is there any stipulations with that?
It's not, it is not a matching grant. It is a reimbursable grant. So what it means is that we will, well, it's a reimbursable grant, but we can spend money that we already have through the gift that we got from the, through the Historic Society and then submit that for reimbursement on this grant program and then have that money back in as we finish the project. So we should be in very good stead to go through with the project. So the one thing that I just want to inform you of, I guess, because we'll do this with the Historic Society funds is that we are, we are required to have an assessment of the windows. We, and I, I can't remember if I've talked about this before in an earlier meeting, I may have. We put out to contractors and we did receive a project proposal from Jonathan Jessup and a project proposal for dealing with the window restoration work that's desperately needed from Pinnacle, Pinnacle, I don't know if it was Pinnacle View or Pinnacle, Don had been instrumental in getting that. So one of them was totally reproducing windows that are exactly like what we have, they would be made of a saple or staple mahogany wood that would have great longevity. The glass would be used that exists, but they would be new window frames. That was one proposal, the other proposal was basically all about rebuilding the existing windows, restoring the, you know, the wood, the tenons and muttons, I think they're called, that hold the paint, the paints of glass in. And we've been struggling in the committee as to which of those plans we thought would be the best to go with. And I think we were kind of leaning in the direction of the new reproduced windows with this particular wood that would give them incredible longevity. However, this grant does have some strings attached to it because it comes through the National Park Service and it is very much about historic preservation. So they really want to see an assessment by someone that they know well and work with to come in, evaluate our windows and determine do we need to have them actually replaced, or can we have them restored and rebuilt? So that's a, you may remember, we've done a couple of these matching programs in the past with Preservation Trust, will pay $250 and that will come out of the Historic Society funds. And they, Preservation Trust will match that for the $500 cost to have the windows evaluated. So I just want you to know that we're going to go ahead with that assessment, nothing is going to happen yet, but that's going to help to inform the decision on what we do. Any work that we do in this project will have to be approved by the National Park Service because that's, the money is actually federal money kind of funneled through Preservation Trust. So that's another step, but I think that we'll have good help with Lisa Ryan at Preservation Trust to get, get through those hurdles, so I'm not too worried about it. But there is also, they use the term covenant on the, on this grant. And that's a 15-year covenant, and I believe that it's just a, and I say just, but it's a, I mean, it's going to be a formal agreement, it's going to be part of the grant agreement which we haven't received, simply going to stipulate that they have a pretty significant interest in the building going forward for the 15 years. And, and not unlike, I would guess, the the understanding that we had with the Vermont Division of Historic Preservation for the grant that we received a few years back whereby we had to have any work building approved by them before we proceeded with it. So this is a longer period, it sounds like it's a more formal agreement. But, you know, I think it's still a same, similar in that we will have a good resource to go to for assistance in understanding what's the best thing that we can do for the building as we go forward and try to continue the work to preserve it and restore it. So that's the big news there. And then the other thing I just want, go, go ahead, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, David.
I just have a question, Sherry. So the grant, you have to actually depend on the cost, have bids or just whatever the Preservation Society says they're going to pay and which company they want, or do you need to have?
We have to bid out the whole project.
Okay.
We have to put the scope of work together, the whole project, not, we can't piece it out, we have to put the whole thing together in a scope of work which, which will describe, and I've talked about all of this with you before. What we want to do is the window work, carpentry repair on the exterior so that then we can have all the collaborates painted. And we want to get the threshold of the, certainly the two entry doors, perhaps some restoration work also on the center door, although that door doesn't open. But those two thresholds repaired, restored, fixed, however that would be. And we're also going to put a hatch in the floor, probably in, in the corner. As, as you may recall, when the work was being done, they had put two holes in the floor in the back corner of the sanctuary space, one to the left as you walked in, right, that main entrance area, and one to the right as you walk in the other side. So I think we're going to go to the one on the right and make a hatch in there that would have a recessed handle and make it easy to open and close that for ongoing access so that we can check things in the spring and know, you know, what's happening under there, if we're getting any moisture intrusion, et cetera, et cetera. So that's the work that will be done, and yes, it would all need to go out to bid and be approved by the National Park Service.
And my second question is, you said that there was a 15-year covenant, is there a timeframe in which you have to spend that money, or?
That's a good question, and I don't know the answer to that. I, I haven't seen any of the grant paperwork, Candace did the application, I don't know if the application spelled that out or not. But I'll, I'll ask Lisa about that, I know when we got the grant before from the Vermont Division for Historic Preservation, I think it was either a year or 18 months and you could apply for an extension on it, so I would guess. They give some pretty sizable grants out on this. And having just been notified now and knowing that a lot of contractor schedules are already filled for the upcoming season, I can't imagine that they would say sorry if you don't spend it, you know, this year, but I will confirm that for sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions about that?
No, but when you give the, the, the grant award and things, can you email it to the select board so that we can see that as well?
Oh, of course, yeah, and, and, you know, I, I'm guessing that there will need to be some signatures on it, David, and I would guess that you, that that would be the board that would be signing that, not us.
Yes.
Right, so yeah, we'll be sure that you see them. We haven't seen anything yet, at least not that I know of, and I'll check with Candace since it went in by her, it had her email address as the contact, so it's possible she's seen something that I haven't seen yet, but I'll check.
I'm actually going to make the motion to have David be able to sign that if it comes in before our next board meeting.
Great, thank you.
Is there a second to that?
Appreciate that.
All those in favor?
And then, and, and any other questions or comments that you want to make with regards to that grant and our efforts to go ahead?
So I, I, just out of curiosity, were the both bids set in in the same ballpark, or was one way higher than the other?
I'm sorry, did you say the two bids?
Yeah, the two appraisals that you got for the, have the windows done, were they about the same to have the windows restored or redone?
Yeah, the, the replacement windows were, that was a higher bid. But it was not an easy apples-to-apples comparison, we've been spending a lot of time trying to sort through that and figure out how to make those comparisons. The one that involved the replacement windows, the windows would be taken out, they would be rebuilt, they would use all of the glass that existed that was in good shape, rebuild them, they would be primed and glass, two coats of prime, glass put in, laced, two coats of paint, and then brought back and installed. The, the repair of the windows only included priming and not painting, so there was all that kind of, you know, sort of sorting it out and, and putting it together. But I think the difference was in the neighborhood of $10,000 maybe? The difference for them.
So, so no, so knowing some of the windows up there, certainly I think probably some can be saved and some probably can't be. When you have the, the assessment, are you going to look at, at that? I know they want to save the old windows probably, but some of them may have to be replaced. Will that, that will be an option too, won't it?
Yep. Yeah, exactly, and that's what's going to come out of this assessment, they, they, Preservation Trust, which is sort of overseeing the use of these funds for historic preservation from the National Park Service, trusted consultant that they work with come in to do that assessment and they will determine, you know, these five windows absolutely need to be replaced, the rest of them can be restored, whatever it might be. But they'll do that window-by-window assessment, I would guess. And Preservation Trust wasn't absolutely, you know, absolutely no way can you do reproduction windows. And I think that the fact that those windows would be an exact replica of what exists and they wouldn't be any new kind of window, they would be a replica of what exists with a different kind of wood would be a good thing. But their preference is to use the older wood, and, you know, she explained a little bit to me about that and I won't go into that, you know, to take up time here, but it was fascinating to understand why it would be beneficial to maintain and use that older wood if at all possible. So I will keep you posted on that, I'm going to get the word out to Lisa to get that window assessment going right away and get a check off to them for our share of it so that they can initiate that. So you may see somebody, you know, on ladders climbing around the meeting house at some point soon, and don't worry about it.
Okay, all right.
Was there something else?
Did you have anything else?
Yes, I did. So the other thing I just wanted to, David, I know you're already aware of this and certainly Janet is too because it was her idea. We are going to go ahead with the purchase of a tree to put up in Eleanor's memory at the meeting house, we don't know exactly where it will be yet, but there is a dogwood that we've identified, we've kind of poked around and gotten some input from, from Jay and from another arborist that I have had, looking at my apple trees here and got some good advice in that. There's one that is available through the Chester plant, tree and shrub sale that was in the Athenian last month or this month. So I think we're going to put an order in for that and I'm guessing that by the end of May, we will have that in the ground and we can sort of do a dedication for it on the day of the, of the plant sale. Which, by the way, will be the Saturday of Memorial Day weekend, our third annual plant sale. So I will probably submit a check, I mean, a, a receipt for that tree for next month's meeting.
Okay. Anything else, Sherry?
That, I think, covers it, that's a lot.
It is, it is.
But good news, all good news.
All good news. Lynn, do you have anything for boards and officials?
I just wanted to let everybody know that at last Thursday's board meeting, we, the, was a reorganization meeting and we brought Ginger on as our new member, we're all excited about that. And that both Grafton and Aff. And that both Grafton and Athens approved or withdraw all vote for Westminster from the Union Elementary. So at this point, that is in the state's hands. We'll see where it goes from there. Other than that, that's all the new stuff that's happened.
Okay, good. Anybody else from boards and officials? Anybody else from boards and officials? Don't see them. Not, we will move on. The next item is trash and recycling. We have gotten word from Triple T, who has been our contractor for years, that they will no longer wish to serve the town of Athens. So we are going to have to put out an RFP to area companies about trash and recycling. Triple T will do it through the month of April. So it will, we will probably be able to vote on a new contract in the April meeting and go from there.
David, the month of April is not too far away. Do you think they would give us an extension if we can't find anyone?
They may. They may do that, but hopefully we'll be able to get this.
David?
Yeah.
In the letter, they stated that if they had to, they could go until May 10th.
Okay. So I would make a motion that we have the Budget Committee put out an RFP to local haulers. We try to follow the direction that we got a town meeting for trash one week, recycling the next. If that can't be done, we can probably change that some if we do it every other week with both. But to get some quotes and things from other trash haulers, so.
On that note, I have been in contact with several other trash haulers.
Okay.
They have not, I just called them this morning. Only one's called back and I missed them. Boy on sap. And so I will, and we're meeting Tuesday night, it's a budget meeting, so we'll be discussing more.
So we can get on that. So is there a second to that, to have the Budget Committee issue an RFP and?
I'll second that.
And have it for our April meeting at the latest? All right, it's been made and seconded.
Can I ask a question about the RFP format? Is an RFP something that we get published and like a public request for proposals? Or is calling companies?
I think it can be both. We can advertise that, you know, whether, if we want, if we want to put it in the paper, want to put it online, that we're looking for it. But I think also we're gonna need to contact the companies and ask them if they will submit a proposal to us.
Okay, but for the, like, for the procurement policy purposes, I'm guessing this is a big enough contract that we are required to do.
To bid it out for, yes, to get for bids.
Okay.
Bids for the meeting.
Okay, thanks.
That's what I was, could have probably said. All right, any discussion on that?
Looks like Witchy has a question.
Yeah. Thank you, Sherri. I'm just wondering, is that in response of the town voting, to the town voting to not do every week?
In their letter to us, it went to the fact that they have some issues getting drivers with CDLs and the ability to serve the town. I don't know if the town meeting vote was one of the issues that they had or not. But their explanation was that they have trouble getting drivers and able to complete all the projects that they have and all the contracts that they have.
All right, thank you.
We checked with Triple T before we did that to make sure that they were amendable to it. And they said that that would be fine. So I don't think that that is the reason.
Okay, thank you.
Well, if I remember correctly, at the, I think it was at the informational meeting when this was talked about, the idea of having the two different days was to help them to have a driver, employ a driver. So it kind of comes as a surprise to now have them pull the rug.
It was to help them, but it was also to help us because they had gone up on their trucking, the amount that they wanted per hour for trucking.
No, I understand that, David, but what I was referring to was that we weren't doing both on one day. We were having one on one week and one on the following week, which enabled them to help employ a driver. So this is kind of a different message.
Correct.
Yeah.
So.
Conspicactory, I would say.
Could be. It could be, so. All right. We will move on to the annual appointments. We've also have an appointment for an auditor and the Budget Committee. The list of appointments, the annual appointments, the fence viewers. They currently are Donald Capincelli, Robert Anderson, and Adrian Kenny. And I will make a motion to reappoint them to that.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
All right.
The Housing Grant Committee is the Select Board and two other members. Since James Trimble is no longer a Select Board member, I would move to appoint Janet Perry.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Aye. The Planning Commission. Janet Perry's term expires in 2021. I will make a motion to reappoint her to that.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Aye. Surveyor of Wood and Coal. Currently, that's held by Donald Capincelli. I would make a motion to reappoint Don.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Aye. Tree Warden, Robert Anderson. I'll make a motion to reappoint Robert Anderson.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Town Service Officer is Lynn Morgan. I will make a motion to reappoint Lynn Morgan. As a Town Service Officer, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Aye. Wyndham Regional Commission. It's now Andrew Tepfler and Robert Anderson. I will make a motion to reappoint both of them.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The Emergency Management Director is myself. Is there anybody who wants to make a motion on that?
I'll make, go ahead, Janet. I'll make a motion that David Bemis be the.
Emergency Management Director. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the Budget Committee. Janet Perry and Amber Stevens' term expires. I will make a motion to appoint both of them.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Denise Randall resigned from there.
I'll make a motion to have Carol Bingham.
I will second that.
She's okay with that? Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Could you repeat? I didn't hear that.
Carol Bingham for the Budget Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so that will go until 2023. Representative and alternate to the Southern Windsor-Wyndham Solid Waste Management District. I am the.
I would like to appoint David Bemis to that for the appointment.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye. And the alternate?
I make a motion that Denise Randall be appointed the alternate.
I second that.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. And Janet has resigned as an auditor, as it's a conflict with being on the Select Board. Jimmy Trimble has offered to serve in that until town meeting. So I will make a motion to appoint Jimmy Trimble for that.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Local Emergency Operation Plan. This is a yearly plan that we have to approve, Local Emergency Management Plan, municipal adoption. I will make a motion that we adopt the plan. It is basically the same as last year's, with just the dates changed. And I think we added a phone number or two. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Warrants and Mail. I will make a motion to approve the warrants. Is there a second?
I'll second it. And Darlene will come in, leave them on the table and we'll come in and sign them.
Okay, I can do that.
Thank you.
When will you have them here, Darlene?
I will drop them off tomorrow morning.
Okay. I will leave the Emergency Management Plan. That needs to be sent to, a copy needs to be sent to Wyndham Regional Commission. Well, actually, I will email it to them and I will leave a copy here for you, Darlene.
Okay, thank you.
Rhodes, Matt, do you have anything?
Uh, yep, just a second. There we go. Yeah, everything's holding up pretty well for the weather we're having. I just went up to Palmer's today and he's making some pretty nice gravel, but it's really expensive. I'd like to get a couple loads of that just in case we have a really bad mud hole. It looks like it'd bind up real good in the mud. If that would be all right, you guys.
How much is really expensive?
$24 a yard delivered here.
Would pay in, what, 16 for?
16, I think it's 1620, but don't hold me to it.
And Basin doesn't have any more gravel?
They do have more gravel.
$8.
It's an $8 difference.
That's a lot of money.
Yeah.
But you think it'll hold, it will work better if you get an open mud hole?
Yeah, if I get a mud hole that's oozing real bad, it should pack in there. It's inch and a half stone. And it's mostly stone with a little bit of fines mixed with it. So I'm talking, I'd say four loads at the most.
Okay.
Just for a bad spot.
So four load would be how many tons or how many yards?
Uh, I think they haul 18 yards, so 18 times four.
16. David, can I speak on that?
Sure.
So why are we buying from Basins if we don't think it's good enough for mud season?
It's good enough for mud season. I'm just saying if there's a really bad spot, instead of dumping a lot of gravel, I can put half the amount of gravel in the spot.
So why would we buy twice as much from Basins when it takes half as much from someone that's closer? Doesn't seem to make a lot of sense.
Well, I just want to try it.
Seems like a lot of money to try when we spent all this money on the gravel that Basins already had hauled in.
Have you used all the gravel already that's been already hauled in?
Nope.
So you have gravel sitting there and you just want more?
Yeah, if we have a bad mud spot, because they can't haul out of their pit once their road thaws out because it's on a dirt road.
Well, what about a couple of loads? Would that work and we'll see how it works?
Yep, that'd be fine.
So that would be?
26 yards.
Would that be reasonable?
That's still a lot of money.
You said you haven't used any, Matthew, of what you bought in?
No, I said I haven't used much.
Oh, is it not working?
It's working, but if I have a really bad mud spot, I'd like to try this stuff in it.
Have you tried this stuff from Basins in a really bad spot ever before? The town's bought it for a few years now.
Yes, we have, Danny, but I want to see if something, I want to see if something else will work a little bit better.
All right.
Always got to try new things.
Well, I, let's try, I would, okay for a couple of loads of it. Just if we have a, have things open up because I've, we've known that to happen before. But not to get more than a couple of loads unless we unless we have a.
Can I just ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
So are you thinking the bad mud spots are on the lower road down my?
Actually, that's holding up real well, but the Reed Road, the Reed Road's been the worst this year.
You didn't put the underdrain down there yet? You're gonna do that?
Have to wait till after snow goes to put that in.
That's okay. I didn't know if you did it last fall.
Nope.
So you're not thinking that that road is gonna be one of the problems that you're thinking of?
No, I'm thinking of between Hannah's house and Steve Oakes's. Because that hasn't hardly thawed at all. And then there's a couple spots up on the Reed Road.
Does the town get any compensation if all of the logging trucks that I understand have been going in and out on Reed Road are really a good part of the cause of the trouble there? Do the, do those loggers help out?
Nope, everybody's all done logging on the Reed Road.
I have a question that might follow up Sherri's question.
Serious, the kind of serious mud problem you were talking that you want to deal with. I mean, the way you talk about it, it sounds like it's a very infrequent, not very common thing.
It's not. But if you get two or three days of warm weather and you can't get to a spot, it gets worse. And you need something to fix those spots. I wanted to try this stuff. If it's this big of a deal, we don't have to. I'll just dump the gravel to it.
Now, what, I, I'm, I'll make the motion that we try two yards of it. It'll be a little over $200. Two truckloads, but it'll be a little over $200 more than the material we have now and it may.
And if it takes less to fix the problem.
It could be worth it, but. So I don't see the, a big harm in trying a couple of loads of it if we do have something open up. So I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Aye. Both?
No.
All right, so two loads, see what we got. If it works, if we have a big opening or something, we can we can discuss it again between meetings if we need it. Is that reasonable?
That works for me.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Hello, David.
So I have a question.
Wait a minute, I'm trying to get in here.
Okay.
David, I wanted to return to the previous discussion of appointments. And specifically to ask, what the role or status of the Planning Commission is at this point? It's been defunct since the last attempt at having a town plan was defeated. And I'm wondering if, if, if there's, if the only purpose of the Planning Commission is to come up with a town plan and then is subsequently defeated by the town residents, whether the commission serves any, any purpose at that point? Why do we continue to have this body if it's, if it's really non-functional?
Well, it would be good to have a town plan. And we are one of very few places in the state that don't have a town plan. I think.
One of three.
Yep, I think it would be, I don't think it would be a reasonable thing to eliminate the Planning Commission. I don't think it would be a reasonable thing to eliminate the planning commission.
But at the same time, David, I, I agree with you in, in that sense, but I feel like the, I would ask the select board to be more active in, in working towards what you have correctly identified as the, the goal that it should try to achieve. Which is getting a successful plan before the, before the residents. And I, I think just to have an annual, well, who's, who's, who's on, who's off the board, off the planning commission. Just makes it, just sort of really a dead for that area.
I, I would not disagree with you that we should have a town plan and that we should be working toward that.
Were there something, was there anything specific with the town plan that the were voted down or was it just the whole thing in general?
I don't think that we can necessarily answer.
Are you asking?
Uh, well, let me, let me just go with that first here, I don't, I can't think that there was a specific part of the town plan that caused a lot of consternation. At the time that it was, that it happened, I don't think that there was one specific part of the plan that, that caused it to be voted down.
Because I was wondering if there was one specific part.
Tim, do you recall any one specific part?
My understanding is that the, that the thing that voted it down, as it did with the previous attempt, was there is a, a group of people in town who fear that it's going to open the floodgates to regulation that they want no part of. And that's why they, they voted it down.
I think specifically in the plan, it indicated that there would not be zoning and that was not
Right. Commission, having served on this body, I know this for a fact, at least in our statements to one another, we all said we were absolutely opposed to zoning. So it wasn't an effort to somehow sneak zoning in the back door. And yet, it was, David, wait a second. When, between the time of the final meeting on this, a final town meeting on this document and the vote itself, there was a concerted effort by some people to badmouth and the, the proposed town plan as an effort to sneak zoning into, into the town behind the residents' back. And that unfortunately, I, I think contributed to, what was it, as I recall, a very close vote, I think it was something like I may be wrong on the numbers, but like thirty-three to thirty, thirty-five to thirty-two, something like that. Which also is sad when you consider the number of people in this town that didn't vote one way or the other for the plan.
Well
I'm, I'm just trying to voice concern about the fact that it's now what, three years since we last went through this process? And as far as I know, still being on the commission, there's been no effort really to revive and get going again on, on trying to do this. And I would strongly urge interested parties to begin to think about doing that and perhaps stepping forward to serve on this body. We had a good body before, we had a good group of people who worked on it. All were pledged to support it. The, do you recall that the select board to a person pledged themselves to support it? And yet it didn't turn out that way. In fact, not all members on the planning commission supported it. As we found out subsequently.
Question, Tim, let me just ask.
Yes.
Wasn't there a specific part in the town plan that indicated that zoning was not to be? Not, was not?
Was not part of the plan.
Was not part of the plan or anticipated to be part of the plan?
Exactly, exactly. That didn't matter to, to people, to that group of people who felt, no, no. This, you know, they made it sound like a conspiracy. And it was, it was sad because it, it as you rightly said, we are one of, I think it's three towns in the state that do not have a town plan. And as a consequence, we deprive ourselves of potential benefits that we might have if we were, if we had a town plan.
Yes, all right. Anything else, Tim, on this?
Well, I would just, I would, being a member of this body still, I would request that, and maybe I'll even put this into the opinion that anyone that's interested in reviving, and that's what it is at this point, reviving the planning commission in order to work on a new draft of the town plan, and I don't think we have to spend a lot of time doing it. I think we can easily access the original draft, go through it, make sure that it's agreeable as best we can figure out and try to do the best we can to get a favorable vote for it. And I would ask people to contact me if they have that kind of interest, so that maybe we can get going. But I would also ask the select board to be vocal in their support of such an endeavor. Because the select board has not always been supportive of this in the past.
So that, Tim, one thing that I would, that I would ask is that we, we now have three people on the planning commission.
Right.
It would be good to have more people, a broader
Oh, yes.
A broader cross-section of people in town. So if, if it were going to be done, it would, it might be good to have more people join the planning commission, which we could do. We can have nine, I believe.
I totally agree with that, David, and in fact, at, with the last effort, we did have a planning commission that did have a cross-section of people. It definitely had people on, they're not, that came on board that were not in favor of, of a town plan for the very reason that I've stated, that they thought it would bring about zoning. So I totally agree that we need to have at least a board that is on the same page when they finally submit their draft. And not in, whether it's hidden or otherwise, in opposition to what is submitted to the voters. Because if we're not united as a, as a planning commission around this, then that's guaranteed to sink it from the beginning. So I agree with you, David, and in fact, what I would suggest is that maybe members, proposed members need to even be appointed by the select board, I don't know why they wouldn't be.
We would, they would be. Members would be.
They would be. Well, candidates that are interested would have to submit their, submit their names to you and the other members of the select board. And I think that's fine, great.
I believe we can have up to nine members.
Yes.
One, nine?
No, we had seven.
Seven, seven to nine, and the select board sits as an ex officio on the planning commission.
And I would ask that that would be an, an active role, unfortunately, in the past, when we've had a member of the select board serving in that capacity, this person did not serve an active role at all. And I think that was an earlier draft that was subsequently defeated, and I think it contributed to its defeat. So we, the idea of unity around this, I think is what you're saying in so many words. David, when you say we need to have a cross-section and representative group of people working on this is, is absolutely right on, I totally agree with you.
All right. All right, we will move on from there.
I still have a question about the roads for Matt.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, Matt, are you going to be posting the roads, the notices that used to go up in the past, I've noticed that other towns have already posted their roads, but I don't see any in Athens.
I don't see any point to it. I mean, if there's activity on a road that's destroying the road, we'll post that road. But everybody's been pretty good, I mean, the worst people, the worst violators of everything is the oil companies. And they've been really good this year, coming in early and not running when it's really hot, they've so everything's been working good, don't need to post them, I don't feel.
Okay.
Because the only one that really pertures are the honest people. If they're not honest, the signs don't mean nothing to them.
Well, I was just concerned because you had said earlier in the meeting that you were worried about some big mud holes, and I was just thinking that maybe if the signs were up, that would deter some of the heavier trucks when the roads do get muddier.
Yes, but we don't have any, where the mud holes are going to be, there shouldn't be any big truck activity other than oil trucks. And they've been pretty good about getting into town earlier in the morning and leaving.
Wouldn't it just be maybe put them up for precautions, just to, just in case you have somebody that's going to come into town and violate the mud season? If people don't know that they're not supposed to be in town because the signs aren't up.
Ninety percent, ninety percent of all logging companies or trucking companies first contact the town anyways before this time of year, before they do anything. The honest contractors, the other ones, it won't matter if the signs are up or not.
But if the signs are up, don't you have more le, I don't know, the word is legal or something like a legal, more of a legal right to call in, say the sheriff's department or something and say, look, these people are violating our signs, we have notices up saying that they're not supposed to be trucking on our roads during these hours during this
Yes.
I, I think that is true, that, that if they are posted. But also, all of the roads, our twenty-four thousand pound roads as they are now. So anything over twenty-four thousand pounds needs a permit, needs permission as it is now. And there are signs up for that, but they are, the permanent signs are not they're not the posted signs for the spring.
Again, with the, with the weight limit, the honest people pay to go through the town and the ones that are going to do it anyway.
Will just do it.
Will just do it.
All right, anything else?
I think Darlene and I had a billing question for Matt. Airgas, Darlene?
Yes, for the last two months, we haven't gotten a bill from airgas, so I was wondering whether you're still using them or I know we did a contract with them, is it covered under the contract?
I, I'll contact them, see what's going on.
Okay.
Okay. All right, anything else anybody has at this point?
Which he has his hand raised.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I've, I've found some, some of the VLCT guidelines and explicit about it, but I don't know when it is that I could make a comment about that.
About what?
The VLCT guidelines about recusal.
Um, you can, you can make the comments now if you want.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll make the comment now, so I found the explicit line. It is, a public officer who has recused himself or herself from participating in an official act or action by a public body shall not sit with the public body. So given that, so I, I just want to make sure there's a sort of public acknowledgement that if, if an officer is to recuse themselves, especially from an executive session where the public is not allowed that then that public official must remove themselves from that executive session, given that they are not allowed to sit with the public body.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
As I said, as I said, our, our policy is from the legal cities and towns. And like I say, you can come and see it when the office is open, so.
Yep, yep, and that's what it said, thank you.
All right. We, I have a matter, we're up next, it's executive session, I will make a motion to enter executive session concerning a legal matter where premature public knowledge would place the town of Athens in a substantial disadvantage. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
All right, hopefully this will not be too long, if anybody wants. Yes.
David, before you absent yourself, who are the other members of the planning commission at present?
Uh, there is Yes.
I didn't hear that, Ivor Stevens.
Ivor Stevens.
Janet Perry.
And Tim Stevens.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so we will now be in executive session. And we will come back.
David, can I ask something?
Sure.
Who is this legal matter about?
It's, it's a legal matter concerning Taylor Hill.
Okay, going back to like the conflict of interest. Janet has relatives up here, so that is a conflict of interest. Not good as a benefit.
Okay.
But technically, according to the policy and according to BTVLC, he shouldn't be part of the discussion, but Policy states that if I was to benefit from the discussion.
I think that's correct. You don't own any property up there? Does any of your immediate family own property up there?
Her sister does.
Her sister does. So that might, might fall under a conflict.
Yeah, I have the legal language here if around familiar or personal relationship. And it says, a, a personal conflict of interest arises when a public officer acts on a matter in which the officer's judgment may be affected because of a familiar or personal relationship or membership in some organization and a desire to help that person or organization further its own interests.
Okay. Um, we could get guidance from our attorney and from legal cities and towns. If you want to Vermont legal cities and towns, VLCT and our attorney. As to whether you needed to recuse yourself or not.
That will not work, help us for tonight though, so we have to make a decision for tonight.
Well, if and Janet doesn't feel that she has a conflict. Well, I will, I will withdraw my motion to go into executive session. And we will proceed without, without an executive session or the discussion on that. And we can bring it up at either a, the next April meeting or at at a special meeting if one is needed.
And you will check with council?
I will check with council and, and the legal cities and towns. I'll check with attorney, can you check with legal, legal cities and towns? So, we will not be having an executive session. Is there any further business?
I have none.
No?
Actually, I can't, Darlene? Has everyone who has been voted in been sworn in?
Yes.
Okay.
David, I have two wait permits that need to be signed.
And they, are they here or are they?
I will leave them off at the office with the warrant.
Okay, there is one, there is one form here for the Southern Windsor Wyndham Solid Waste Management District. If you can make a copy of that, I'll leave that on the table, if you make a copy of that and send that to them. I have signed that so that you There's also, we need one for, and I don't have it, but we need one for the appointment of the Wyndham Regional Commissioners.
David.
What?
That's on my desk.
Okay, so I will sign that and I will leave that with the management district. Thing, so. All right, is there any other business?
I make a motion, will you adjourn?
I do, I, I would like to make a statement if I could.
Sure, absolutely.
I was elected as the select board member. I was elected as the select board member overwhelmingly to serve this community with honor, honesty and integrity. I will not be bullied, I will not be intimidated, and I will not be threatened to deter from my job. Thank you.
Alright. If there's nothing further, um the meeting will be adjourned.